Okay, it is three o'clock I see by looking at the booth. So, study session on waste reduction. I'll look at City Manager Mike Skragg to kick us off.
This has been an ongoing conversation with a waste characterization study and kind of a strategic plan that's brought to you before, but I'm going to turn it over to Jim and Jim, Jim Kowatch and General Services Director and Jim Toich, Public Works Director.
Commissioners, I'm Jim Kowatch. It started back in 2021 as part of the Solid Waste Management Committee. One of the tasks, in addition to looking at solid waste management plan, is to recommend ways to reduce waste or improve recycling. And as part of that, zero waste by 2050 was adopted as part of the solid waste management plan in 2021, and the solid waste committee has been working towards those means. At the same time, the city's been proactive in trying to be good stewards of our natural resources and looking at ways to reduce the footprint for our solid waste here in Salina. As you know, we do operate a sanitation department and we do operate the landfill. And we do, those are enterprise funds and they do need to make a profit, but at the same time, we're not in the profit and we're in the doing good for the city side of things. So, we have started the study last summer as far as waste reduction study, and that came on the heels of our waste sort and our recyclables composition study we did last spring. There was a lot of good information that we collected at that, at that study, but the next phase was kind of what's the city going to do with this information? So, the, the purpose of the waste reduction study that started last fall was to research best practices, kind of what's going on in progressive cities on the east and west coast. We wanted to analyze the data that had been collected from our solid waste sort and our recyclables composition study. And then we also held a public survey. It went on for the entire month of February this year. We had 586 responses, and I'll talk a little bit more about the survey. The responses are included in your packet. And then here just a couple of weeks ago, we had a public meeting. We held that on March 29th, and that was to go over the preliminary findings of the study, some of the recommendations, and then also to present the, the survey results. The slides that are in your packet were actually the boards that were at the public meeting. They're not, they're really too busy to be slides, but I wanted to present you the information that was shown to the public. These were the boards, they were three by five boards, three by four boards that were at the public meeting. We had it at the McKenzie Center, which is just across the street from the library. So, the first slide was just an introduction purpose. Here at the bottom of that slide is where we go into the definition of zero waste as adopted by the city. It's down in the green there, Jacob, down below there. "As stewards of our community, the philosophy not only promotes reuse, recycling, and conservation programs, but also and more importantly emphasizes sustainability by considering the entire life cycle of products, processes, and systems." So that was the, the formal, what zero ma- waste means as far as when we talk about it here in Salina. The next slide was the strategic planning process that goes through the different steps, where the final goal, number nine down there, is to develop an action plan, things that we can do to remove waste from our waste stream and make Salina more efficient. The third slide, current solid waste programs, kind of summarizes. There's a lot of information on that slide, but we have our drive-through recycling center. We do hold an e-waste event annually. We have a household hazardous waste facility that is open one day a week, seven to seven, and then by appointment, and then the first Saturday of the month. We do operate the landfill. We do operate the limb drop-off area, or what we call yard waste out at the landfill. There's pharmaceuticals that are collected at the sheriff's department, and then we do have a Sharps protection, or Sharps collection program at various locations around the city. And our landfill superintendent collects those Sharps, and the, by Sharps, I mean those are the needles and medical paraphernalia that for people with diabetes or whatever, we want those disposed of properly. So they have to be collected separately, and then we have to catalog where they're located in the, in the landfill when we deposit them. Number four, slide four there is the material characterization study, and these are, are pretty dramatic numbers, but they, they really don't take into account contamination. But if you look at the raw materials in our waste stream, 31% were potentially recyclable and 30, 52% were potentially divertible. But it does, that does not include contamination, like food waste, when it's crossed, like paper with stuff on it, it's paper, it's potentially recyclable, but you really can't if it's got cheese all over it, those kinds of things, so. But there's a lot of material still going in the landfill that could be recycled or The online survey that we conducted in February, if you want to pull up that other slide, Jacob, we'll kind of go over it first. We advertised our survey on our, on our website, on our Facebook page, we had radio ads about it, we had posters at the recycling center about the online survey, as well as the water bill inserts. And it takes one full month to get through everybody's water bill in the city. So we actually had the survey open for a whole month to make sure everybody got a water bill insert telling them about the survey. So, 20,000 households in Salina got noticed that there was a, a survey asking them to please respond. We got 586 responses, which we thought was pretty good, but it's still really a small sample. So really, that's 2.8% of our customer count, still a really small sample. And then when we were looking at the results, 349 out of those 586 said they recycle regularly. So, we're thinking that the word of mouth or the posters in the recycling center, the people that are recycling now, were the ones most interested in providing input to the survey. So, we just wanted to point out that it's a really small sample size, it's dominated by people, 60%, that are already recycling. Those are the ones that, that made, most of the ones that made the effort to try to recycle. So, when you look at the results, you got to remember these are people that are recycling active or proactive. Okay, if you want to go back to the other PowerPoint, Jacob, please. And I, you can look at these, and they're included in your packet, but I just had a couple of notes on, on some of the numbers here. Remembering that 60% were recycling customers, 80% of the respondents felt like recycling and composting was important or very important. So 80% of the survey. There's 40% that do separate their yard waste, 60% that do not, as far as their glass, grass clippings and stuff. And then we had some, some questions about the household hazardous waste and e-waste participation as well on that slide. One thing that was interesting is 75% were willing to separate film to take to a facility, and film is just the real fine plastic, like the grocery sacks that we use, or some of the, the real thin plastics that are on some of the food wrappings. 60% were willing to separate glass to take to a facility. Okay, slide seven. 68% were willing to separate film for curbside pickup. So there were more people willing to take it somewhere than have it picked up at the curb, which I thought was kind of interesting. 40% said they were willing to separate food waste for curbside collection, and 75% said that they would separate yard waste for curbside collection. So 75% of the, very small sample, said that they were interested in composting. Question 16 was, was interesting that there were 45% that weren't willing to pay anything for curbside collection, 40, 40% that were willing to pay $10 or less for curbside collection. Question 17, we asked them about support for some sort of reuse center for building materials and, and those types of things. 60% would definitely support it, 10% would not support it, but there were another 30% kind of in the middle, it depends on where it was, what stuff cost, and what was available. So there's kind of a mixed bag there of reuse center support. There are some reuse centers in Topeka and Lawrence and some other larger cities that are really popular, but those are, are generally ran by Habitat for Humanity or some other organization. But the recycling of building materials is really popular, and with the housing shortage in Salina, our landfill sees really good stuff going to landfill every day. He said, "It's just a shame somebody can't use it." So there's some discussion, or at least some talk about how the city could be involved or somehow support a reuse center if someone else ran it, whether that's in the form of startup costs, or a subsidy, or something like that. But we haven't made any, made any contacts or don't know of anyone that would be interested in, in starting up a reuse center here in Salina. The barriers, still, there's a lot of risk in the recycling market, and it's just they're, it costs a lot. Our, our recycling costs us $65 a ton to dispose. Our current tipping fees are $44 a ton for regular trash, so it's about 50% higher. But because our recyclables are so clean, we pay about half what everybody else is. Most of them are paying over $120 a ton to process their recycles, recyclables. The next, the next few slides here are kind of the results of this, the survey. Nine potential strategies, they're spread out over three pages here, but this is kind of what we're finding, some of the low-hanging fruit, the direction that we're proposing to, that we're proposing to head as far as our waste reduction. We are coordinating with the Zero Waste Initiative Group here in town that Dr. Black is heading up, and he's made some inroads with some, some pretty major players here in town as far as individually recycling or efforts to recycle, reduce waste. But they're still kind of grassroots or just getting going. I know that they've got a few things that are, that are really promising. But the number one thing is to kind of leverage what we have. We're seeing about 20% growth in our, in our attendance or our participation in the drive-through recycling center now annually. We're up to about seven, a little over 700 tons a year, which is, still, I think it's respectful, respect, respectful, but it's a, there's a lot of opportunities for increased tonnages and, and diversion of materials. So, we, right now, we have radio ads and Facebook ads and website ads and word of mouth. We're partnering with Recyclops for curbside collection, and that's kind of went through some growing pains, but I think it's headed in the right direction again as far as getting some employees and, and making their, their service more reliable. So, using our existing programs and trying to grow those seems to be one of the cheapest and easiest things we can do through increased ads or events. We're also looking at developing programs to divert organic materials, that, that being yard waste and/or food waste. We do have a, in our contract with our solid waste consultant this year, a composting study to, one, gauge the amount of material that could be possibly processed a year, whether or not that facility makes sense to have somewhere here in town, or out at the landfill, and then how you would man it, what the cost would be, those kinds of things. And we'll be back towards the end of the year, early next year, with recommendations on composting again. But a commission, a couple of commissions ago, we went through a really painful process looking at our yard waste, looking at our automated trucks, and looking at our whole waste system. And as part of our master plan, at that time, it was decided to discontinue our curbside collection of yard waste. Not that that's where we'll be a year from now, but that, that was the decision that was made then. Another area is to evaluate envi- environmentally sustainable policies and regulations. And here's where a lot of cities and now states have enacted the, the plastic bag ban that previous mayor Davis was promoting, going into effect January 1st in Colorado statewide. It's already in place, and a lot of the grocery stores have voluntarily started it already, but it's, it's going into effect statewide in Colorado, January of 2024. But there are also local ordinances that prevent styrofoam for fast food containers because styrofoam is so hard to recycle or reuse. There are some other policies and regulations that you folks may be interested in as, as the trends increase nationwide. Slide nine, prioritizing cardboard diversion. One of the things that, a large percentage of what we collect at our recycling center, but a large percentage of what's going in the landfill, there's just a lot of cardboard, good, clean cardboard that, that could have been recycled. So, we noticed it, and it, it's an area where we think we might be able to partner with one of the local recyclers to maybe put some drop-off locations for strictly for cardboard. It's one of the commodities that has a pretty stable price right now and is still desirable. And if it's just cardboard, it's easier to try to eliminate contamination with that cardboard. So we're looking for partnerships for, for cardboard, and we contacted both of the regional recyclers, Salina Waste and Hometown, that collect cardboard, and, and asked them for prices, and may approach you as the study wraps up with some potential ideas for cardboard diversion. One of the other areas is glass. There's still a lot of glass in the landfill, and glass can be reused over and over and over. I know Dr., Dr. Black has also been working with some of the businesses and stuff here in town. If there was a, a glass bunker somewhere on some sort of means to collect glass, the glass bottles for restaurants and bars, the glass jars that people get their pickles in, those kinds of things, if there were drop-off locations strictly for glass, there again, it may be something that we could minimize contamination if it was just a glass drop-off collection. Obtaining waste and recycling program data, that's something that we're doing now, but it's something that we really want to promote and emphasize that by looking at our total waste stream in Salina, but then also looking at our total recycling in Salina. Because of some, some major metal recyclers here in town, they, they recycle almost as much metal as the tonnage that we're sending out to the landfill, that they're recycling 40,000 tons a year, and we're taking 85,000 tons to the landfill, so it's, it's a huge amount. We want to make sure that we report those kinds of recycling, is it, whether it's soup cans or it's car bodies, it's still iron, you know, or aluminum or whatever that's being recycled. So, we want to make sure that we get the data for what, what those tonnages are, so we can report it accurately. How we measure progress, or how we measure what's getting recycled is important to us, or what's getting diverted from the landfill. We were also looking at considering programs and services for hard-to-recycle materials. And the one that really jumps out at us is batteries. Right now, we're, we've came to you recently with the whole issue of lithium batteries and increased, double down our efforts to advertise and, and try to educate folks on the proper way to dispose of lithium batteries. We take regular batteries in the landfill, but, and we try to, as far as the lead acid car batteries, we try to get people to take those to, to businesses that accept them here in town. But trying to divert those, even though they're accepted in the landfill, the lead and the acid and those kinds of things are not conducive to, to, to a clean area, especially if those materials can be recycled or reused. So, battery, some sort of battery cooperative with the, the businesses that already accept those. And I know that Barb Young with the North Salina Development has gotten a couple grants, and the last two years, I think she's, she said just that the last one, she collected over 12,000 tires, that it was four semi-loads of tires and they were packed in there tight. Those are things that we have to pay to dispose of. We don't put them in our landfill, we have to actually pay a contractor to dispose of them, but those are the things we want to make sure they're disposed of properly and they don't end up on our county roads or in our creek somewhere, so. But tires and batteries are some of those harder to recycle, or harder to recycle materials that we want to make sure we get diverted. Slide 10 is potential strategies. The last couple of them here is just waste prevention. EPA's hierarchy is down at the bottom of that page, but really, if you don't use it, then you don't have to recycle it. So there are some things that just education with people, reusable bottles, reusable cups instead of the plastic water bottles can save thousands and thousands of tons of plastic every year. I'm not, I'm not judging anyone, we all use them, but there are, like, in this building, we've went to the expense of filtering the water and, and have promoted people using reusable cups for clean drinking water instead of the bottles. But bottles are convenient. If there was a way to reuse those, we would try to promote that. And then promoting the reuse of materials, there again, we, we are looking at trying to investigate if there is anyone interested in a reuse center, or what the startup cost might be, or what the, the operating cost might be. We've reached out to, to Topeka to try to get some information from them. I have not talked to the one in Lawrence, but they're at the bottom of the page still, the hierarchy with EPA is if you don't, if you don't use it, you don't have to recycle We are planning for a final report in June or July of this year. This is gonna, these nine focus areas is probably what the, the summary is going to be, the bulk of it is. These, these same, this study and the process of collecting data, doing a, doing a, a study, investigations, making recommendations, is also going to be discussed at the Kansas Organization of Recyclers Annual Conference, the works conference, on Wednesday of this week. As you remember, KDHE, the Bureau of Solid Waste Management, participated in our waste sort, and they're promoting these kinds of activities statewide in this, as an educational effort. Salina was invited to, to speak about our process, that this is something that they'd like to model a lot more behavior on, getting data and, and searching out ways to divert waste, and they're actually making it more and more a requirement rather than just a reportable on their annual plan. What are you doing to divert waste? So, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of what we've learned from the public and what we've presented to the public, and future presentations later this week, kind of what was going on, but we wanted to, to make sure you knew what was going on with us, and if you had any questions, we wanted to make sure, or direction, we wanted to make sure and get that information or feedback from you. That's it.
Jim, do you have anything to add, or we'll have questions from the commission?
I, I think I would just wait to hear the questions from the commission. I guess there are a couple of things that we could talk about. Jim mentioned quite a bit of, that's quite a bit of information in a very short amount of time, and maybe just a couple of points that I would want to highlight is, one, it's very important that we keep the survey results in perspective to the number of customers that we have, as Jim mentioned on that one slide. Many people probably know that Sunoco recently closed, so I felt like it was, it's probably a good idea to mention that all of that paper material that was going to Sunoco is now going to Georgia Pacific. Georgia Pacific is one of the largest recyclers in the world. They make products ranging from Dixie cups to baby diapers to food processing packaging materials. They sell raw paper pulp on a worldwide market, so our, our material could end up in any one of those products. Before it was always, at Sunoco, it was always going solely to house insulation at John Mansfield. Now that with Georgia Pacific taking over the paper products for our, for Stutzmann's, now that those, it, it sort of expands the use of that, that paper material, so I think that's another important thing. We can't emphasize enough that one, Jim's right, that there are a lot of, there's a lot of recycling going on in Salina that, that staff has struggled with getting the information from private businesses because many of them guard that as proprietary and they're just not willing to share with us. So, our last five-year study, we reported that we're recycling about 40, our, our recycling rate in Salina is about 46%, but I will tell you that that number is low because there are a number of major players in Salina who do, are not so willing to share that information for those very reasons. So, that, that's currently about where we are. We're, the, the, the last thing I want to say is, for me, it's really important to emphasize quality over quantity. A lot of people focus solely on how much material you collect, but it's only as good as what you're able to do with that product, and making smart decisions about how we can best affect very targeted sources of waste is rapidly becoming the major topic of conversation at the state level. KDHE recently contacted Jim about applying for recycler, recycler of the year, and we didn't feel comfortable with submitting that because we're still in the data gathering phase, and we're still early in this process, and there's a lot to, to be done. But it is being modeled, it is being looked at, the state is promoting it, and we think that going after waste very strategically, much like all your strategic planning with the city manager, very much like that, finding out what exactly, what tonnages each of those products represent, and how we might best build a system that is sustainable. Jim mentioned that the, we had to shut down the yard waste program, and yes, it's unfortunate, but that was an extraordinarily inefficient program, and it needed to be shut down. It was not doing the city or its residents very much good because we were so limited in the materials that we were actually collecting, and the majority of the yard waste was still ending up in our landfill. So, for good or bad, we are trying to focus on quality, and whatever we, whatever recommendations may come out, SCS knows and the state knows, my first priority is keeping contamination rates as low as we, that are humanly possible. The reason that we have favorable rates is only because our material is so clean. The reason that we have favorable rates is only because our material is so clean and it can go to pure recyclers. Our, our paper products can go to someone who sells paper fiber on a, on a global market to include places like Shanghai and Mumbai. But we can only do that because the, the product is so pure. So yes, quantity is important, but only if it's well-managed and if the product stays extremely clean. So, thank you.
Okay, questions? I'll start with Commissioner Davis.
First one's a comment. If we were your practice audience for Wednesday, I think you're ready. I don't know if you're presenting or not, but, okay.
Yes.
The city will look good and so will you. Thank you. If we remove cardboard and glass, and for all the right reasons, and move it into the market, does that raise our price in McPherson? Because I'm assuming they're making money off the cardboard and glass.
It is a great question, and it's largely the other reason that we receive such favorable rates, because we are not trying to isolate products. That, them taking plastics one through seven is only financially feasible when you also have products that have, you know, that are much more valuable in the commodities market. So this is what I meant by being very strategic about how we do it. Jim mentioned using remote locations. So we have to be very considerate of where we would put any facilities to either capture additional glass or cardboard. We really want to try to figure out how to target those who are not currently participating, you know, the, the people who didn't participate in this survey, the people that are disposing of that product at the landfill right now, without harming those, because we would also like to maintain the growth rate that we've seen, about 200 tons in the last four years annually at the SDRC, that 20 percent a year that he talked about. So we have to be really strategic about how we do that so that we don't do exactly what you said, because that would probably, we don't want to harm a program that's currently running really well. We're hoping to supplement that program with some additional ways. Jim mentioned in particular restaurants and bars. So this is an opportunity where we feel we could work with the Zero Waste Initiative very effectively. If we can identify businesses who are interested in capturing all that glass and cardboard and developing relationships and helping to manage those relationships with a recycler, that's an opportunity where we are capturing cardboard and glass that isn't going to affect the SDRC, the operation of our current recycling facility. And that is something I didn't mention, but that's another change, that Ripple Glass in September of last year was bought out by a company, Strategic Materials, I believe is what the name of it is. So we had been negotiating with Ripple Glass for quite a long time, getting us toward this point. So now we're sort of going to have to start over on glass if, if we want to continue to explore that option. But it's an excellent question, and that's the thing that keeps me up, trying to figure out, how can we do that without affecting our customers?
On the other side of that coin, would we get a break on the price if we delivered the cardboard and glass already separated?
So, no, because the, it's, the cost, it's built into the cost of the materials, if that makes sense. What it, what it could do, though, is any glass that's collected strategically at remote locations, it's possible to negotiate with a company to possibly either, depending on where they are, like in this case, Kansas City, Ripple was just about to the point where they were going to come pick up our glass and actually pay us for the glass. And it's unfortunate, but we'll have to start that negotiation again. But it, it is possible that we could earn some revenue from, from these additional activities. And the fact that there's a number of very, you know, Jim mentioned some prominent business people in Salina that are, have at least tacitly agreed to be part of the Zero Waste Initiative. And if we can, if Dr. Black is able to create enough interest in the private community, I think that's where we have an opportunity to say, if, if we can encourage a private to do it, that, I think that's in our best interest for a lot of reasons, but it, it also is a way that we can attack the problem without causing harm to other programs that we already have.
This being my last comment, I was going through one of our real large, big box stores on the west side of South Ninth Street, and, you know, they were stocking the shelves, and each box has a little message. Conserve this box, you know, it costs us an average of a dollar per box, you know. So that's a lot of recycling that will never hit our stats, but it is being recycled.
And, and it's really hard when you're trying to establish the recycling rate for Salina, right? Because, one, we need to know the, the weight of, the, the volume and weight of those materials so that we can count them as total waste in Salina, and then to be able to count them as this is material that has been recycled. So that's why I maintain that that 46 percent is probably pretty low, because there's a number of large companies that, that do that. And, and those are the companies where, you know, they have a national, or in that case, international footprint, so they're recycling in volumes that are huge. And, I mean, I understand why they, they want to protect that information. It's unfortunate for us because it never really gives us a true sense of how much material is being produced, or how much is actually being recycled or reused.
The reuse center. That's a good idea. I've seen that pretty successful in Manhattan, especially with furniture. You know, you always see furniture sitting at the curb, waiting to be picked up by the trash. Seems like that's pretty successful. I didn't realize other communities were doing it. But it requires someone to facilitate that, and, but I think the way they do it in Manhattan, it's just a planned event on a Saturday, and you just bring your stuff, and other people come and haul it away.
Yeah, I think, I think our approach, going into it at least, is trying to see if we can create a public-private function for that event. One of the obvious requirements is real estate. You have to have space to do this. Generally, if it's furniture, you have to protect it from weather.
I think they do it outside.
You can, you can.
It's like a Saturday event. Everyone brings their stuff and other people come and haul it away.
Yeah, you, you certainly can, where it's, it's, it's not really a reuse center, it's more like a, almost a swap.
Swap meet.
Where, yeah, like a swap meet kind of thing.
Come home with a better chair than you came with.
And, and Mr. Hammond's at the landfill, affectionately known as Landfill Larry, will tell you that there's, there's a great deal of material that ends up at the landfill that should not, should not ever be there. There's, there is stuff that could be captured and reused.
People don't know what else to do with it.
That's right. And, and if, if we can find a private organization that's willing to take this on, we would try to help facilitate that as best we could. And we, we think that there's certainly opportunity there.
My limited experience with the reuse center, I investigated it after my dad passed, but ultimately didn't make use of it. But it was a Habitat for Humanity facility. You made an appointment, they would come to your home. In my dad's case, he was a do-it-yourselfer like me, he had electrical outlets that had never been used, odds and ends, tools, you name it. They would come, size all that up, whether it had value to them, give you a tax exemption letter for what they estimated the value to be. They would pack it up, deliver it to the reuse center, and others could go to the reuse center and buy those components, those tools that I assume at a discounted price. And so I, when you say that, you know, Habitat for Humanity has those reuse centers, that's what I hear in my mind's eye, that, and in that case, we lived in a small town in a region, you know, we would have been 20 miles away from something similar to Salina. They would actually drive to you and pick it up and take it to the reuse center. If we could facilitate something like that.
And it's certainly worth exploring, you know, much, much like the e-waste event that we do, it's very popular for at least a percentage of Salinans, and so there, there could be opportunity there. Again, we're, we are not finished with the, the study. SCS still has some work to do, staff still has some work to do, but it, it's, that idea is certainly on our mind as an opportunity.
Yeah, and you talked about our, our waste being so clean. Well, the reason it is, is because your customers down there at the recycle center, they got, most of them got a passion for this.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, if you don't have people with the passion for recycling, they, but.
And, and because we, we very politely give materials back to our customers when, when they try to give us something that we can't take.
What's that rolling around on my truck?
But I, I will say, and you're right, and, and we should thank them, because we have fantastic customers at the recycling center. Once they understand what they can bring and what they can't, they follow those rules, and we rarely have trouble. It's usually just the first time when, when you try to take something and you didn't realize that you were taking it. And that includes me. I, I've done it myself, and I'm the guy that wrote the Acceptables and Not Acceptables list, and they still said, hey, we're giving this back to you. So, and I appreciate that because we don't want to affect the contamination rate.
And they've given me suggestions as to where to take the few things that they couldn't take, which I thought was.
And we try, we try to do that. Like Styrofoam is extraordinarily difficult to recycle. Very few people do it. There's only one in the state. And, but we will try to link our customers up with people who can take certain items, if we can.
You talked about glass a lot. Do they take glass at the recycle center?
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering how that keeps from contaminating your cardboard. You know, who wants cardboard with broken-up glass?
The easiest way to say it is because they have extraordinarily sophisticated equipment and, and recently updated with even more sophisticated equipment.
Well, my idea with, I got a lot of background with glass, and if you did come up with a separate collection of like glass jars and bottles, come up with a crusher-type system that would crush it, and you put a lot of glass in a 55-gallon barrel that's crushed up. Otherwise, a lot of space, but.
Yep.
The recycle place in Hutcheson, Sunoco, what's that stand for?
Sunoco is the na, I mean, that's.
That was the paper mill?
Yes, that's the pa, that was the paper mill.
Okay. And where is the Georgia Pacific facility that's?
I, I believe the one that we are using is Muskegee, Oklahoma.
So the stuff's going from Hutcheson to Oklahoma now?
Correct.
Yard waste, you know, a lot of people were really up, not happy when discontinued the yard waste. Is there any way with the automated trucks, could speed that process and make it a little more efficient, bring it back? Or is there, do we even have a place to dump it?
I'm trying to think the best way to answer this. It's extraordinarily costly. There's, there's probably better alternatives that we would want to try to promote. With, what, what I think a lot of people didn't understand was the, if I can get you to mulch your grass, that is the cleanest, easiest, fastest, cheapest, most green way to dispose of that material. Picking it up, transporting it, dropping it off, composting it, taking it somewhere else can be done. And, and I am an advocate for trying to promote composting in Salina. I would love to have a composting facility somewhere in Salina, and it's certainly one of the things that we're looking at.
So we no longer have?
But it is, it is costly.
No longer have the Kenza that took the waste previously?
I, I believe they're still in business, but we haven't had a contract with them for two or four years now.
Yep.
Okay. Well, my grass grows too fast this time of year to compost, to mulch it, so. Yeah, I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
No, I did want to comment on the corporate stuff, though. You don't realize that a company has this much tonnage of cardboard, well, that's going to cost them to throw it in landfill, where they can make a, make a few cents on the dollar by recycling it.
Absolutely.
And especially with, you know, we've got companies that does, has a lot of metal and steel. Having a different sites to collect stuff. I know that they have canned collections, and the problem you have with that is people will dump undesirable stuff.
Absolutely. If, if people can recall when, after the ice storm in 2007, and we opened up Markley and it became a limb site, a limb drop-off site, when it came time to dispose of about 17,000 tons of brown waste, trees, limbs, branches, we had refrigerators, tires, furniture. So, yeah, and, and the number one thing that we have to protect against, because again, we're focusing on quality, is how to prevent contamination. So we will have to be thoughtful in the size of the container, the shape of the opening, where it's located, are there people to kind of keep an eye on it? Is it secure during hours that it's, that they don't want it available? And then partnering with the privates to figure out a place to, you know, that are interested in collecting it. But, yeah, you're absolutely right.
No questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure I have any questions. I've, you know, recycled for years and years, and the only thing it seems to me like is if we put more, and I won't make this a negative, but if we put more requirements where people have to divide their, their glass and their cardboard and stuff, I think you'll see a lower participation rate. I mean, I think people participate now because they're able to throw everything together. I know my daughter lives in, in the Overland Park area, and they, they do not, they have to separate their glass from everything else. And I don't know if that's how they, I know they do that, I'm not sure how they get rid of their glass. I think they have to take their glass to a separate location.
In, in a lot of places, the reason that is, is because what they do with the product. Our product is, is becoming insulation, so we, we're sort of insulated from that problem. By the time the glass goes through the recycler, I, I can't, I think it's called millet, I can't remember exactly if that's right or not, but it, it is a extraordinarily fine powder. It's not even like little broken pieces, it's literally back into like smaller-than-sand size. And it, it's been run through cleansers, and it's been de-papered, and it's been, they, they have machines that like, I don't want to say vacuum, but it's extraordinarily clean by the time it ends up going to the, the guy who's making fiberglass insulation. insulation on the other end.
It's called collet.
Collet. Thank you.
And because we have, you know, our, our recycling is so clean, we're not paying anything. It's just the cost to get it to them. Is that correct? To the recycling, to Hutch?
No, we, we pay per ton.
We do have to pay.
We do. As Jim said, less than half of what everyone else is having to pay. And it's, I mean, our contamination rate is less than a 1%. And that's why it's very difficult to get it down to that level, but.
Yeah. And I think that's the thing that maybe the public doesn't realize. I forgot that we were paying. I, I thought we were just, they were accepting it for, you know, for, without us paying a fee. But recycling is, is not, not free. It, it does cost a city dollars to do that. And, and you know, I think a lot of people thought, well, you could sell the glass, you can sell the paper and make money, but that's not the way that it works anymore.
You know, we, we've had a couple of talks over the years and, and we indicated fairly early on, and I think we were fortunate, the commission made some good decisions about holding off on just a wholesale expansion of recycling. The markets are, I don't want to, I don't want to say they're worse, but they have not improved the way that a lot of people expected them to. Post-COVID has sort of helped in that. More countries have decided to take a harder look of what materials they are willing to accept. The, the need for very clean recyclables is pretty much now known nationwide, worldwide really. And so there's a lot of effort in getting toward really improving the, the quality of everything. And I, I think that's one of the reasons the state looks to us so favorably.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We'll be back in here in about nine minutes for regular meeting. Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call the April 17th Salina City Commission meeting to order. I would first look at staff and ask for confirmation that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. With that, can we have roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Thank you. Will those who are able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we will move into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, recognition of the week of April 17 through 21, 2023, is National Work Zone Awareness Week in the City of Salina. Elizabeth Amos, Public Works Administrative Assistant, will read the proclamation.
I am not Elizabeth. Just thought I'd introduce Elizabeth as one of our administrative assistants in our, in our public works group. And has been with us just a little bit over seven months and we're glad to have her. And it's funny, it seems like the newest person sometimes gets this. So she was very willing, though, so she's going to do this today. Thank you, Liz.
Happy to oblige. Proclamation of the City of Salina, Kansas. Whereas construction work and repairs to our roads must be done with traffic on them, putting both motorists and workers at risk every day. And whereas workers diligently continue to improve, rebuild and maintain roadways so motorists can safely and efficiently travel throughout Salina. And whereas in Kansas during 2022, 11 motorists and two pedestrians were killed and 341 others were injured in work zone related crashes. And whereas nearly 90% of the people injured or killed in work zone crashes each year are motorists, making work zone safety important to all citizens. And whereas 62% of these fatalities and injuries were caused by inattentive driving following too closely and speeding in construction zones. And whereas to reduce fatalities and injuries, motorists must remember to set aside distractions, be extra cautious, and give work zones their undivided attention when traveling. And whereas safety on the roads is a shared responsibility and we all must do our part to keep our roadways safe. And whereas the City of Salina is dedicated to enhancing work zone safety for both road workers and motorists. Now therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of April 17 through the 21st, 2023, as National Work Zone Awareness Week in the City of Salina. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in work zone safety and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life while working under these adverse conditions.
Thank you for sharing with us. Can you give us a little insight on what we try to do as a city to protect our workers as far as in those work zones?
Well, I mean, there's of course all the signage and everything and just really focusing on paying attention and setting the cell phone to the side and keeping your head up and watching, watching what's going on around you.
Yeah, just some of the basics. I'm sure the, the cell phones are probably the biggest distraction we have right now. I wish, you know, I know some cities have made it so you really can't use your cell phone while you're in the car. So we, we appreciate the work that the, the workers do and, and please be safe out there. I know it's, I wish we had no accidents out there and hopefully, knock on wood, Salina continues to be a safe place for you guys to work. So any other comments from Dan? With that, I do have a proclamation. I would have you come forward, Elizabeth, and present to you.
Thank you for being with us. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time, so that will lead us to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of the meeting of April 10, 2023. Item 5.2, authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement for excess workers' compensation coverage. And item 5.3, sound provider agreement for the 2023 Smoky Hill River Festival.
Okay, is there an item that the city, a city commissioner would like to have pulled?
5.3.
Okay, we will pull item 5.3. Any others? If not, I would accept a motion to approve items 5.1 and 5.2?
Mayor, I move to approve 5.1 and 5.2 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 5.1 and 5.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Those two pass 5-0. I will bring up Mr. Anderson.
Hello, my name is Sarah Keck and I'm the entertainment coordinator for the River Festival. Do you guys have any questions for us?
Yeah. Commissioner Longbine?
Yeah, the, it seems like we're expanding every year. Can you kind of tell us the details of what all is going to be in this contract?
Yes. So we actually have three live stages at the festival. There used to be four, but we are actually at three now. And the price of the overall festival has actually stayed the same as 2022 and 2021. So even though we have a lot of different acts that are adding variety, we're trying to find ways where that creativity is happening, but it's still using a standard format or standard equipment to make that happen and be very aware of that pricing.
Okay. And does this include, are we doing the big screen again this year?
On the back of the Eric Stein stage, yes. That includes the price of that screen and that is staying consistent with 2022.
And that is included in this?
Yes.
Okay. 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 Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for a motion.
Mayor, move approval of consent agenda item 5.3.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item 5.3. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 6.1, approve resolution number 23-8124, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements for the purchase of vehicles and equipment approved under the 2023 SubCIP.
Ms. Pack.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance and Administration. On February 6, 2023, City Commission approved the 2023 SubCIP. As part of vehicles and equipment section of that plan, the Parks Department was allocated $250,000 for purchase of vehicles and equipment. Upon their completion of a 10-year equipment replacement schedule, they went out for bid for five pieces of equipment that they deemed the, the highest priority for them. Of those five bids, all of those came in under budget and staff is recommending that those bids. those bids go to the low bidder. There's two seventy-two inch mowers that were bid, a greens mower, a compact utility tractor, and one utility vehicle. Also, in accordance with their plan, they had another seventy-two inch mid-mout mower that was going to be requested next year, and so since they had about nineteen thousand dollars left, not including, there's a few other items that I'll be bringing back later, staff felt it was important to take advantage of the pricing that we're getting this year of eighteen thousand five hundred for those mowers and go ahead and request an additional replacement of a third mower. So out of their allocation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with these recommendate recommended purchases, they would be utilizing a hundred, a little over a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, which leaves them about eighty-eight thousand dollars for their remaining items. In total, the sales tax, vehicle and equipment-supported items were five hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, with the estimated cost of the remaining items to be bid at two hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-four, and then the previously recommended and these recommended items come in, there there, we anticipate that there'll be about fifty-four hundred dollars left out of that two thousand and twenty-three allocation. Staff has identified the following options for city commission: to approve resolution twenty-three dash eight-one-two-four, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with selected vendors; to approve the resolution with amendments city commission deems appropriate; postpone consideration of the resolution and give staff direction as to additional information; or not approve the resolution and and give us direction as far as rebidding or or how you would like us to proceed with these particular items. Staff recommends option number one. I would stand for questions. I also ask park staff here that can answer any questions and the central garage supervisor who can answer questions on technical things, so.
Okay, I'll start to my left. Commissioner Ryan?
None.
It's time to use this stuff now. What's the delivery time?
I believe if you look at the the bid spec sheet, there is a delivery time on them. Most of them are a hundred and fifty days, so three to six months. Some of them, like the bigger item, the greens mower is almost a year, two hundred and fifty days, so up to a year. So it depends on what the item is, but they vary.
Yeah, here I see it. Yeah, that's a real problem.
Yes.
You might want to buy something, but you can't get it.
Another reason to go ahead and order something that's going to be needed next year at a price we can get today.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number two-three dash eight-one-two-four, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with the selected vendors.
I'll second that.
Had stereo there for a minute in my ear, so. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eight-one-two-four, authorizing the city manager to execute agreements with selected vendors. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item passes five zero. Okay, that will lead us to item six point two.
Item six point two, consider supporting a letter to the state of Kansas in support of the application by the Salina Grace Foundation for tax credits.
Okay, I will look to Mr. Hennessy over here to get us started.
Sean Hennessy, Assistant City Manager. We received a request from Salina Grace. As you know, Salina Grace provides services for homeless and other at-risk individuals. They're in the process of relocating to another building, and they requested the city in support for an application to the state for tax credits for a letter supporting their application for tax credits, and Chad Young is here to give you any more background and answer any other questions you may have.
Okay, there is no fiscal here, but I'm.
Yeah, I'm not asking for money.
Yeah, I was like.
Don't worry, I'll be back.
We hopefully will get you some, huh? Okay, does any commission, do you have anything you want to add, or?
Just, I believe most of you see the value that we bring to the company. We're reaching out and actually doing something to help those who need it most in our community. We're doing our very best to get people who are homeless in our community off the streets and start getting them the the help that they need, and we're doing it in a way that shows love, compassion, and dignity, and encouragement as we build these relationships with those in our community who need the help the most. So we just ask for a letter of support as we apply for these tax credits. Hopefully, that will encourage some people in our community to give generously as we look to cover the financial cost of moving facilities.
Chad, you might explain how the tax credits work. I know we've got a description in the staff report, but.
Well, I tell you, it'd be better to have an accountant explain it, but I can tell you the basics of it. If someone were to give a one thousand dollar gift, for example, they would be able to write off or or receive back five hundred dollars worth of credits from the state of Kansas, and so essentially, that's half of the money they're going to be getting back in tax credits, and then in addition to that, that thousand dollars they can claim on their federal taxes as well and get some kind of a a write-off on some of that donation as well. So it's very beneficial to the person who's making the donation, and it helps keep more money in our community.
And that's a direct credit on your state income tax?
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, yeah.
Correct.
That's good. It's a good day to talk about tax credits.
Yes, absolutely.
And just out of curiosity, and this probably in a question for you, but is there a tax credit, do you receive something from the from Salina Grace? How do you receive that tax credit to be used on on an individual's tax return? Because usually tax credits are done in larger increments by larger corporations, so.
So how it works through us is we will be working with the state, we'll show them when the donations are made, and then we will be given the certificates to send to the donors so that they have them around January one.
Okay. Any questions from commission?
Are there any requirements to qualify for this that, or any hurdles you still have to go over, or is it a guaranteed?
Oh, it is not a guarantee, that's for sure. Yes, there are still things we are doing. We still need people who are encouraged to donate, who find the tax credits encouraging to them to write letters saying, hey, I will, I will give to this program for the tax credits. That's probably the one area that we need the the most help on at this time is getting more of those letters, and and I believe that they're going to start coming in quickly, but that that's an area that we.
I don't know if this, when it goes out in final draft, you can put phone numbers and addresses on the bottom, but could you tell folks where they would send that letter to?
They would send that letter to six forty-five East Crawford, Suite E eight, here in Salina. Just make it out to Salina Grace, and we will send it on to the Kansas Department of Revenue and attach that to our application.
When would you need that by?
If we could have it by the end of this week, that would be great, yes.
Okay.
Do you have a timeline on the grant application, when you expect to hear?
July first is when they expect the to find out about the tax credits.
And what is the timeline on the move?
That's changing all the time, you know? This time last year, we thought we were going to need to be moved by last summer, so here we still are waiting, and so we do believe that our actual move is going to be closer to the end of this year, so we're going to have to move pretty quick on all of this. Yeah.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public?
Richard Humphries, Salina, Kansas. I feel this is a great opportunity. You guys do great things. I love coming out there to eat and be with the public and very, very passionate about what you do. As well, I think this is a great opportunity for small businesses to understand how these credits work, so if we could figure out a workshop maybe through the resource of the TV so that they can have a better understanding and also apply themselves with this opportunity. I think that'd be great. Solid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move approve resolution twenty-three eighty-one twenty-six. Second.
We have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash eight-one-two-six. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Good luck, Mr. Young.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the support.
That will bring us to item six point three.
Item six point three, engage special legal counsel to assist with housing RFP Development Agreement preparation.
Okay, Ms. Gray.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you well know, we are, I'm sure you're confident where we at are, where we are at in the housing process, but as you know, we secured twenty-five million dollars of grant funds from the state of Kansas. We conducted an RFP process. We did that with the assistance of Matt Webster, who is employed by our financial advisor, Stiefel Nicholas. He has been invaluable in terms of having direct experience with similar RFP processes conducted in kind of the Midwest and the Kansas City metro in particular. As you know, we are unique in that we did not have a parcel of ground that we were soliciting proposals for development of that specific piece of ground, which made our process and our RFP exceptionally unique, but Mr. Webster's been very helpful in preparing the RFPs, administering the RFP process, and and has demonstrated his knowledge of of that process. Well, as we've discussed previously, we're going to need to negotiate a development agreement, and those conversations have begun with Salina Destination Development based on the the recent direction you provided there, so have identified the need for specialized legal counsel. I'm confident that we've done things similar and and used in-house counsel and used other resources. This is is very unique and is also time-sensitive, so I'm not going to say that we couldn't get it done in-house, but it would be quite an undertaking and it would have to to move a lot of priorities around, and there's something to be said for the experience of of having negotiated agreements like this and and being able to kind of strategically look out for our interests as well as have a starting point, frankly, to have existing documents and and a process that they've they've relied on previously. So Mr. Webster was able to identify a handful of attorneys that that are involved in these type of negotiations, either on the side of a representing a municipality or representing a developer. We took a look at those in terms of their experience and their availability. We did have to to wait until we identified the selected developers so that they could run a a conflicts check and make sure that they didn't have some existing involvement with the the developer that would create a conflict. So we zeroed in on Stephen Sparks with Brian Cave Lighton-Paisner, LLP. He was kind of, came highly recommended by Mr. Webster, seemed to have the most extensive experience and the most on-point experience, and so what's attached to this staff report is their proposed engagement letter following their their conclusion of their conflicts check. I would acknowledge that their hourly rate is significant. It is, it ranges from the Mr. Sparks, who being the senior counsel at five hundred and ninety dollars an hour, to counsel at five eighty and an associate at five twenty. It also includes the hourly rates for their legal assistants and other support staff in the two hundred and fifteen to three hundred and seventy-five dollar an hour range. That's that's significant, and it's comparable to some other consulting that that we use on occasion, but I don't want to dismiss the fact that that is significant. I think there is value added based on their expertise, their experience, their ability to get expedite the process, and that's certainly an issue as it relates to this particular project. The other thing that I would note, in the fiscal note, I acknowledge that we take it out of contractual services. One thing of note, as we've talked with Mr. Webster on the term sheet, which is kind of that detailed outline leading up to a development agreement and negotiation of the development agreement, is our intention is not to waive building permit fees, so I think by the time we get this project done, building permit fees will more than cover the consulting fees that will incur with Mr. Webster and with with Mr. Sparks and his firm, but didn't, like I said, did not want to dismiss the the value of their their hourly rate. And the other thing I would tell you, I guess, is they are based out of Kansas City. That is a just a prominent firm representative of their of their rates in Kansas City. That's not a east coast or a west coast rate. But with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The options that we identified for your consideration are to authorize engagement of Stephen Sparks and his firm. I stopped short of giving you the option of approving it in some alternate form. I don't know that we just have the ability to unilaterally do that, so the next option I identified was postponing consideration of the attached engagement engagement letter and providing additional direction to staff on how you'd like to proceed, or you can vote not to approve and provide additional direction to staff and and how you would like to proceed. Having said that, conversations have been ongoing to develop the term sheet with Matt Webster, basically fleshing out everything that we heard in in the written proposal and the proposal before you as the starting point of those negotiations, as well as a lot more technical detail that's kind of standard for a development agreement like this, all in preparation for bringing legal counsel on board and turning that into a a formal development agreement that would draft, would come to you in the executive session, we'd talk that through and then try to get it executed by both parties. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
Just city attorney could probably, and just from experience, is most of the work in issues like this done by the paralegal and subordinate staff, or is it more top-heavy work?
I would, sorry. I would have to say probably a balance of both. Certainly, you want the expertise of the lawyer who has developed that expertise over the years in terms of any of the negotiated aspects of the discussion, but I'm sure they rely on those experienced legal assistants as well in terms of the document, any work in relation to the document.
And are these hours billed in increments such that if city manager calls for a ten-minute phone call, is that billed as a ten to fifteen-minute increment or hour or portion thereof?
Go ahead. I don't recall if they spoke to the increment in the.
I don't know that they did in the engagement letter, but it's down to.
It would be an itemized statement normally at least to the tenth of an hour, if not the quarter hour.
Okay. Long as it wasn't the entire hour.
Yeah, not an hour. Generally, an hour, no, not not generally an hour at a time.
Don't call and talk about the Royals. If you're on the clock, I can tell you.
If it was, I'd certainly group my questions and make sure it's a full hour.
One does find oneself speaking faster.
And would it be unnecessary to even project how many hours at this point?
And the, I thought about that. I don't, and given frankly, your potential direction as a governing body of what you would like to consider and the developers' responsiveness to being open to different scenarios, while I think there's an opportunity to expedite based on past experience, starting with a template document, starting with frankly, kind of a meeting of the minds of the parties, this is how we typically do it, I think we gain efficiencies there, but I think we potentially lose efficiencies as we try to account for different scenarios and negotiate different possibilities in. So I don't, I don't have a.
I debated even asking the question, but you know, a project this big, I don't want us to get penny-wise and pound foolish on on the details that can come back and bite us later.
Yeah, and I, and I don't want to oversell it, but it's, it's apparent to me with Mr. Webster and his experience, there's just so much that is matter of course, this is how we do it, and if we, this is what we can expect out of them, this is what they can expect out of us, that there, there is a lot of not just billable hour efficiency, but strategic efficiency gained from their experience. We're paying a premium to get it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Longbine?
That was my concern, is this just going to be an open-ended account? That was my concern, is this just going to be an open-ended account that goes on forever? Or is this gonna, I assume the developer's going to have his own legal team and they're going to talk to this team?
Yeah, and I think he's paying the same hourly rate, so I think he may be as motivated as we are, but it would only...
I wondered if he had the same law firm.
No, that's where the conflict check comes in. It would culminate in the development agreement and execution of the development agreement. So it's really kind of targeted at assisting us in getting that done. Now, we may end up having to refer to them somewhere out in the future on matters that relate to development agreement interpretation, but focus is primary on that.
Yeah, I, well, I would certainly endorse everything that Mr. Scrag has advised you about in terms of the approach to this sort of transaction. It is virtually impossible for them to estimate what that cost would be. My experience would say that if we required them to do so, you could expect that they would build in sufficient insurance that their normal rates were covered and that you could very well find that you were paying more than you would be if it was strictly on the basis of the hourly rates. And that this should be a get it done as well as I expect it will be done, should virtually be the end of the project.
Yeah, I think so. Both parties are certainly motivated. You know, the conversations we've had since you identified Salina Destination have been on point, moving right along. In fact, there's a sense of urgency looking back to staff to get the engagement done and get us the term sheet and let's get rolling. There certainly will be talking points, we're going to need to go over an executive session at the point that we get that first draft of the term sheet and have those details.
So Mr. Warner advertised that they would be on the ground by July. Is that still reality?
That's aggressive, but we met with them last week. They had 12 individuals show up for a development review team meeting, and we walked them through annexation, zoning, all the land use aspects that are necessary. And you know, he has a number of different scenarios where, you know, I think he can get some things started quickly. I don't know if he'll hit July, but part of that will be a function of how quickly we can get the development agreement finalized.
Well, I think with a firm that has this much experience with that, they should go pretty quickly. But do you, what do we think, $100,000?
A hundred dollars would be 60,000, and I think it's certainly that.
We ought to keep it under 100 grand.
Do my best. On a, you know, on a $25 million project and the building permit associated with it, it's...
So will we be forgiving building permits on this project if they ask for that? Is that part of the deal?
My starting point would be if we do, it would be but for our billable expenses for consulting that it would be a holdback to cover our cost.
Yeah.
Okay. Just a comment, project of this magnitude, this approach makes a lot of sense to me. And I think if we didn't do it, we would probably regret it. I'm all for it.
As far as the July start date, if there's a, if there's a reason they don't start in July, it probably falls on the city as much as anything. I mean, I'm just being honest because we still have to do, we have certain things we have to do as far as annexing and stuff, so.
Yeah.
And plus drawing up the development agreement. I mean, I think there, if we didn't have to have a development agreement, we weren't doing some of those things, they would be willing to start. They've got financing and they've got a construction company lined up, so.
I'm willing to carry responsibility, I'm not willing to take all the responsibility.
Right, yeah, but I mean, it's, I mean...
Because they had reason to know that they needed annexation, rezoning, but the, any delays in the development agreement will certainly contribute to it.
As far as the development agreement, you know, from when we met with them, there's potential for some variance from what their initial presentation was. So do we have to work through all of those variances before we sign a development agreement? Or you, I'm just, I'm asking, or can be a development agreement be done in phases as if, as construction could be done? I guess that's a question.
That is a really good question, and if you'll humor me with an analogy, with the downtown Starbond District, we had a master agreement, we had a supplemental agreement, we had transferee agreements. When we were talking about the provisions of the term sheets, that was one of the questions that came up, and that's where I think our advisors can help us with their expertise, saying, here's, we've seen it done before, here's the, we don't want to slow down the project, but you don't want to put off obligations or, you know, overlook negotiating points in the process.
Because I think the developer heard some of the concerns we had, and I think they're, from what I understand, they're going to try to address those, but that will also lengthen that timeline. So if they, if we have to get a total development agreement, it's going to be, it could be a while, so that's a...
Yeah, I would say the developer has heard that. They've indicated a responsiveness to commit to things on the front end while they're pursuing other things, but you want as much clarity before you, you know, start, sound the starting gun as possible. That's where negotiating the nuances of this development agreement...
Well, I think that's where that, and a law firm that's had experience in that will definitely help protect us and stuff.
Right.
As much as those rates are a little higher than we see in Salina, but the, again, the more you get a law firm that has expertise in a certain matter, the rates go up because of that expertise. So that's just the way it works. Don't have to like it, that's the way it works.
Yep.
So, okay, if there's no other questions, I'll open it up to the public for comments or questions. Okay, not hearing any, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we authorize the city manager to execute the attached engagement letter with Stephen Sparks and Brian Cave Leighton-Paisner LLP for the purpose of securing their services and assisting the city with negotiating and drafting a development agreement in response to the city's multifamily housing RFP process.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, now I'm going to shorten this up a little bit. Authorizing the city manager to execute the attached engagement letter with Stephen Sparks and Brian Cave Leighton-Paisner LLP for the purpose of drafting a development agreement for the housing, Salina Housing RFP process. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. One more step towards additional housing. I do not see where we have any development business on the agenda. That will bring us to other business. Is there a commissioner that has something they'd like to bring before the group?
One, did have a citizen who asked, four by four, which I guess is, I don't write them myself. I wanted to call it a dune buggy, but it's ATV, are not allowed on Salina city streets, but are allowed in the county. And he wanted to know how to petition and who to petition to make them legal in the city. Because the problem was if he were to drive it from the city storage to the county where it's legal, there's no way to do it legally.
So there's state statutes, there's local ordinance that essentially defines a worksite utility vehicle and some other types of vehicles and specifies what equipment is required to be street legal. So if you'd asked me, my first reaction would have been that there are state statutes that require certain items that would apply in the county or the city. But in order to answer your question, we'd probably need to take a look at, you know, the specific requirements, and then ultimately, if we have latitude within the statute, it would come back to you as the city commission as to whether you want to make those lawful on city streets. But brakes, headlights, turn signals, brake lights, those type of things.
Because I'm talking about something I don't know much about, obviously. I'll, unless you just know right where it is, if not, I can find out after.
Well, yeah, we can certainly get you the information, we can provide a bit of a summary. I guess the question I'd put to the city commission as a group is, are you receptive to, if the state statutes allow, are you receptive to four-wheelers on city streets?
I'm assuming if they're on the streets, they have to be tagged. I'm guessing vehicle...
Well, you're back to the street legal question versus...
But that would be a state determination regarding whether it gets tagged or not.
Yes, the street legal definition, we might have a little bit of latitude. But on the, on the assumption that it's what you typically think of when you hear a four-wheeler, is that something you want to legalize on city streets?
My answer would be no.
Yeah, you'd be dealing with liability insurance and everything else.
Well, I mean, if the person wants to, they'd have to get all that. I mean, I figure they're no worse than having the motorized bikes on the street.
I think it would be a state issue whether the vehicle could be tagged.
Yeah, we can, we can sort through the state issues and let you know if you have sufficient latitude. My question is, if you have the latitude, do you intend to use it? Or do we already know the answer to the question?
Well, the way I look at it, they're going to put it on the city street to get it to the county anyway, and just as soon have them tag it and make sure it's up to certain safety standards.
It's not just one we're talking about, though. They may come out of the woodwork, so.
Yeah, it's not the getting to the county, it's, you know, traveling within the community amongst traffic.
Like I did when I was a kid with my motorcycle, I pushed it, sometimes.
Not looking to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm putting you on the spot.
I just, well, just be curious to find out what the situation is.
I don't know if a call to the police department would answer that right away. That's what I would do.
We've been through this question on pedal pubs, the, you pedal and drink beer while you go down the road. We've been on golf carts, on, yep, on micro motorcycles. There, there's a whole school of thought on that. We can get you the information, for sure.
Well, I guess at least present what the current situation is and then...
We can certainly do that.
I look at my other commissioner, my answer is no.
Trailer, that's the answer to that particular problem. And honestly, my perception of it is, I mean, I've lived in neighborhoods where regardless of the law, we have parents that just aren't thinking, in my opinion, and they'll throw a 10-year-old, a 12-year-old on a four-wheeler and have them cruise around a subdivision like Magnolia Hills or Highland Meadows-Hamlet and think nothing of it, and it's a recipe for disaster, in my opinion. You know, whoever you spoke to is probably a very reasonable, right-minded person. The problem is, there's a lot of people that aren't. They're pretty fast and loose when it comes to the four-wheelers.
Yeah, or if you can just send me the statute and I'll forward it. And even if we don't take action here, but just to get some information, okay?
I hope, I hope it's helpful, Mayor, if I may, that the statute itself will not necessarily be the answer to the question, is my concern, and possibly Mr. Scrag's as well. The, we're into the potential of whether the city would be exercising its home rule authority. But our home rule authority is subject to state law, uniformly applicable state law, and if so, it must be consistent with that uniformly applicable state law. I would expect that the laws related to this are uniformly applicable. If they're not, they are subject to charter ordinance, but that would, that's a whole nother aspect. And I'm deferential to you all and to the city manager, obviously, but it is, it would take a fair amount of analysis to even be able to determine whether that could occur.
And one person asking, with all we have on our plate, I'm not sure that's the best use of our resources right now. Not to, not to say no to the public.
I didn't even know where to go look to even begin to answer the question, and I said, well, I'll find out.
I think we can get you the statute, I don't know how clear it will be.
And just so the city manager hears an opinion from each of us, frankly, I think there's too many things on the streets that don't belong there, first of all, but I would be curious to know what other communities are doing. Especially, I mean, we're kind of in the middle between rural and urban, so it's, I don't know. I'd like everybody to be free, but on the other hand, it's kind of exercise of common sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure that helped you any.
Nope, that was a behalf note.
Okay, any other business from commissioners?
Yeah, Chad Young was here with Salina Grace Project, and I just wanted to share Saturday at the Salina Rescue Mission, they had an open house, and I attended. And it was a very structured tour of the Salina Rescue Mission with the directors and facilitators of all the different programs told what they did. And we started in the kitchen, and the person who is in charge of all the kitchen, all the, like 100 meals a day, twice a day, he is a former resident of the rescue mission and went through the New Life Program, and now he's working for him and essentially managing the whole food operation out there. And, but I just wish people could see exactly what's going on there, and their goal is not to just house and feed men, it's to transform lives. And Jonathan, who was the kitchen manager, his life was transformed and very inspiring. So I would encourage people to drop by out there and let him show you around.
Thank you. Might just state, we have strategic planning again tomorrow. Will there be a, I can't remember, looking at the agenda, a chance for public...
Yes, we scheduled it at 11:45 and 2:45.
Okay, thank you.
Indicated approximately at those times.
I didn't have mine with me, so thank you for that, so the public will know. So, and that's going to be at Tony's Pizza Event Center upstairs.
Yep.
Okay?
At 9:00 AM?
Yes, 9:00 to 2:00.
Okay. Anything else with that? We'll open it up to citizens forum. This is an opportunity for individuals to come forward with a topic that's on their mind. We ask that you keep it to three minutes or less.
I think I misspoke. We're 11:45 and 1:45, we ended 2:00.
Okay, I was gonna, we're gonna sit there for 45 minutes before they, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, Richard Humphrey, Salina, Kansas. Mayor, thank you for letting the participation be the cornerstone here, as we know. Sorry, I get clammy, I'm so new at this, but everything I'm doing is for future years to come, as we do know that. But yeah, so earlier today, with the access TV being an opportunity for Chad Young to get small businesses to be encouraged by how the tax credits, the write-offs and everything work could be something positive for startup companies, as I believe we should look into mercantilism concepts to understand how we could pursue future small startup business procurements and operations with the county. I do believe that the language that I've heard about the north end of town recently, I'm not going to verbatim it, but it's, well, set as an eyesore. So addressing how we could use Salina Waste and other facilities to help engage the community with satellite shipping containers to talk trash, you know, how to recycle whatnot, would be an opportunity to bring them forward and utilize these opportunities. It's not just that, but as I mentioned, a job fair opportunity so we could have how we have Mr. Larry out there at the, at the waste, working with them, how they use staffing agencies, but we could do that internally, I believe, probably the best opportunity with that. I do believe that, oh man, I'm so confused. But if 10% of these departments that are funded by taxpayers, if they do come help out with the spring cleanup or whatnot, if you can let them know to be part of it, they can see how much fun it might be to work in these departments that we do have that keep this town running. So please encourage others to participate in keeping our town clean, and I think... others to participate in keeping our town clean, and I think these are great branding opportunities with these water bottles right now, so it's clear plastic, and I think things are gonna work out really good in the future. That's all I got.
Thank you. I do believe we have a cleanup day coming up, don't we, in Salina?
Yes, I don't know the date off the top of my head.
Is it May 6th? Whenever that Saturday is, I think it's the 6th. Is it May 6th? I can't remember. So, I know they try to move throughout the community and do that, so.
Ben, one holds Salina. I'm hoping that Mayor Hoppick will give me some extra time since I haven't been here for the last two weeks, and I should have time in the bank.
Don't think we get it to work that way, but thanks for asking. You don't ask, you don't know, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I may take a little more time, anyway. I want to thank Commissioner Ryan for bringing to my attention that I have been spreading false information as far as the sales tax in the state and the city. He gave me a copy of the Kansas rate, tax rate and fiscal data for 2023. I had been spreading that we had the second highest sales tax in the state and the second highest city tax rate in Kansas. Even though the publication didn't go into tax rates and details, doing a little more digging on Google, I came up with revised number. Kansas is ranked ninth in the highest sales tax in the country. Even though there wasn't much data on the 9.2 that most citizens have to spend here in Salina on sales tax, if you take into consideration the total special and regular sales tax, that's if you shop downtown and you're at 11.25, we are the second highest in the state. The highest in the state is 11.5, and Leavenworth, Junction City, and Coffeyville beat us by a quarter percent. Other numbers that I found quite interesting that would relate to why people are screaming about the sales tax that they aren't having taken away or having to pay, that 8.3% of the families in Salina are in the poverty level. Other numbers that I found interesting is that the Kansas median income in 2021 was 64,521. In Salina, it's 52,702, or 18% less than the median of the state. So, there's why our citizens aren't happy when they're taxed to death. Second, Clearwave, let's talk about Clearwave. Since I'm the one that brought up the red flag for this company tearing up everybody's front yard in town and doing, not putting it back right, I'm gonna tell you, they dug up my yard today, and they're getting better. They are getting better. The crews are being more avid about what they do. There were two tamperers in the neighborhood, they were putting the dirt back right. I put my own soil back, and it was commented that I need to teach their guys how to do it, because I got it all back in there. So, they are trying really hard. I did meet your city inspector who was over all of this, and I want to tell Mike and tell Jim that you need to let this guy do his job. He is very, goes by the book, and he's got a blueprint on exactly what they're supposed to do, and he's trying really, really hard. And I know he's getting a little backlash from uppers, because all that takes is if Clearwave doesn't like what is being told to them, they go to somebody else and they get a reprieve. So, you need to let this guy do his job, very, very, very good individual.
I'll give you about another 30 seconds, how's that?
Okay, all right.
I'm being nice today.
Can you tell me, since you approved the amount on consent, agenda item 5.3, what that amount was? That would be for the sound system for the River Festival.
32,000.
32,000?
32,500.
32,500. Okay. You talk about savings for sales tax, because if we're gonna have 5%, or $5 million taken away on sales tax, if the state goes through with food sales tax, there is one area you could have stopped right there, 32,000, but you didn't. On a happy and a sad note, two weeks ago, I went to Lindesburg downtown. We had a great time there, and we took a horse carriage ride in that town. It was a great ride, and it was actually the same individual that used to do it downtown here in Salina, but he doesn't do it here anymore. That's the sad part.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We have somebody online? Okay.
Mr. Blanchard, you can go ahead. Okay, sorry, I had to find the right button. Thank you, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll keep this brief since Ben was a little long-winded. You know, a few, a couple of months ago, I came to the commission, made the suggestion that we look into petitioning on behalf of whoever the developer may be on our apartments project, that we seek the consent and petition for the annexation and the rezone of the property, that seems to be the most popular of what we're doing. So, I just kind of want to make that suggestion once again. Perhaps you've already taken some sort of action on that, but I just think that if we're, if time is of the essence, and we know that we have a 60-day period from setting, passing a resolution to set a hearing date, that we ought to maybe try to get those to, get the annexation on the clock and let that time run concurrently with putting together the development agreement. You know, as in the past, you know, if whatever doesn't work out with that particular property, nothing happens until the second reading. So, I just want to make that suggestion again. It might help speed things along at least a little bit. You never know when there's gonna be a hiccup from all the different moving parts in an annexation. So, anyway, just making that suggestion. Don't know if you've done anything already on that, but if you haven't, I'm just throwing that out there once again. So, good luck with that project, and anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else in the public that would like to comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.